Okay, this will call the Singer City Council into regular session at 7 o'clock PM on Monday, August the 4th, 2025. If you will, please rise for the invocation and pledge. The invocation will be led by Councilman Gann, followed by the pledge by Councilman Bill.
Pray with me if you would. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for all the blessings. Thank you for all the answered prayers. Continue to watch over us and give us your direction in God's as we go over these items and continue to watch over us as a city and just help us continue to place it first. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Turn and face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I be seated? The first item on our agenda as usual is our citizen input time. Anyone wishing to speak in front of council is welcome to come forward to the podium. We like for you to state your name and address for the record. We generally limit those to three minutes just for efficient use of time. We do like to get a citizen's input form from you just for the city secretary's records. That does not need to hold you up from coming up and doing your discussion tonight. You just need to fill one out before we get done with our meeting and provide it to the city secretary. I do have one form, and if there's anybody else wishing to speak, they're welcome to do also. We'll start with our first form, Mr. Rich Wilson.
Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. After sitting through a few meetings and listening to the budget and hearing where we're going with the next year to two years, I guess I just had some questions as house values move up $81 million over the next two years. That's going to bring in a lot more revenue that I'm thinking if we're going to bring in that much more revenue with our revenue projections at 7.7%, another $600,000 increase and still have the 3.5% you all can do and then the other 3.5%. I'm just thinking that revenues are going up or house values are going up 81 million, there's that much more revenue coming in in property taxes in the budget. It didn't include Tom Thumb or any of that added revenue that's coming in. I'm just thinking there's an opportunity to actually lower taxes instead of less people in the same. You know, not raising taxes is a great way to say it, but our taxes are still going up. I'm still paying more for my property tax and still paying more for everything else. So I am still paying more even though we're saying no new taxes. So I just would like y'all to look at opportunities to reduce taxes versus just how can I spend more money? So appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak during citizen's input time is welcome to come forward? Okay, see no one else approaching the podium. Council, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It has your minutes from the July 21st meeting and several plats that have come to us in earlier versions that are now garnering staff approval after having met engineering comments. And we have several, are interlocal with police and fire, some groundwater type studies that need to be done for our water system, several final plats. Anyway, if there's anything as usual that you'd like to pull to discuss further, feel you're welcome to do so. And if not, I'd entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
If nobody wishes to pull anything, then I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items, that's 2 through 10 as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Bill U, seconded by Councilman Gann, approving consent agenda items which consist of 2 through 10 agenda items as presented. All in favor of that motion to approve the consent agenda indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to our public hearing timeframe. Item 11 is to conduct a public hearing on a request for a specific use permit for office use on the south end of 3.935 acres of land described as A0029AR, RV track 132 and known as 207 Chapman Drive, zoned as industrial 1I2 and generally located on the north side of Chapman Drive approximately 525 feet east of the intersection of Chapman Drive and Fifth Street. Having read that, I'll open the public hearing at 7:06 and let staff introduce the item and then we can take any input.
This is a house that sits right there along Fifth Street next to Marvin's Garage and in front of the towing company. It has been a residence for years. That use was always, has been a non-conforming use and the house recently became vacant several months ago, I say recently, several months ago. And so the owners are looking to what they can still do with that house. So they had come up with an office use for that house. Staff feels that office is a better use than an industrial use at that point and would recommend approval with this for that S U P.
With that introduction, I'd invite anybody who'd like to come speak during the public hearing for us with this. We'll have time to visit on any detail or reaction item, but we'd like to hear from the public at this point and if I wish to speak. Okay, see no one approaching the podium to speak during public hearing on this item. I'll close the public hearing at 7:07. That will move us to the next public hearing, which is the next public hearing, a request for zoning change for agricultural A to planned development P D for approximately 130.907 acres of land, 60 acres described as A0029AR, RV track 67 and 68 PT and A0029R, RV track 66 PT within the city of Singer and generally located north of FM 455 and east of the Santa Fei Railroad. We'll call the public hearing open at 7:08 and again let staff introduce.
Yes, this is a planned development that will consist of both commercial and residential lots. There'll be 374 residential lots along the backside. 297 of those will be 50-foot lots, 78 of them will be 60-foot lots. They did have, or they do have four parks located within this subdivision. There's parks A through D. So anywhere you see the dark green in there is a park, a dedicated park. Some of them will have playground equipment, some of them will have just shade structures, just different, and there will also be trails that go along that floodplain area where it's not necessarily developable down through there, but there can be trails and things and so it's still a usable space. So they have met the parkland requirements with those parks that they're, they've shown there. Their detention will be at the end there. The front portion of that will be your commercial part. So there is, you know, still opportunity for commercial to come in. As you know, there's commercial coming in across the street from that, so we assume that commercial will drive commercial and we'll probably have good sites on both sides of that, which is what I think our land use plan looks for and would like.
With that introduction, I do invite anybody who would like to speak during the public hearing to come forward and share their thoughts you may have. Please, if you will, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Silo with JBI Partners, 2121 Midway Road in Carrollton. Our firm represents the applicant this evening. I was here during some of the pre-meeting and the council was having some discussion and questions and I just want you to know I'm here if you have any questions, more than happy to answer them for you.
Right. Super. When we get to the action item, we will probably take you up on that. Yeah. I would entertain anybody else wishing to speak on public hearing. Again, if you will state your name and address for the record.
Hope I have that space. Hello, I'm Charles Wood. I live at 10 Pleasant Valley up in Sable Creek. I also sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission and I want to talk about some of my concerns with this development. First, also thank you staff and council for letting me speak on this item. My main concerns with this development are two issues, the lack of safety and some poor health practices that are happening with this development. Specifically in relation to health, I am glad that they have added some more green spaces in their plan, but I think that the existing trailhead could connect farther north to connect into future developments that could be better used for future growth projections as it seems the trail just kind of ends at that Bell's Road, which I think is a lost potential as well. I am concerned about the 30, I think it's about 38 houses that are right next to the railroad tracks. Being so close to a railroad tracks causes a lot of noise from the freight train coming in, blowing the train going through. I don't need to tell you, you all live in Singer, it's very loud next to that freight train and that's a lot of stress that's going to add to those residents that are going to be moving in there and that's a huge concern that I have. My other concern comes with safety. With this current plan, in order to access the commercial areas from the residential areas, you have to use a car to get to that. So that means going through the intersection of Bell's and East Chapman. That is an intersection that will be used by children at the middle school and at the high school who are going to be walking through it once this neighborhood is developed. I think a great way that we could make it into a more pro-business for the commercials while also easing the demand on that intersection is by adding more walkability options between the residential areas to the commercial. Ideally, having a park in between to serve as a buffer so that somebody can come from the residential, go through the park, grab ice cream at their favorite ice cream parlor in the commercial area, go back to the park and meet their neighbors. And I think there's a huge incentive for the businesses and it's a way to reduce the demand of cars at that intersection, which will ultimately create a safer environment for the students at that middle school and high school. So again, in conclusion, I recommend council to consider adding, extending that trailhead connection to northern developments for future properties. And I also would encourage the increased walkability options between the residential to the commercial to make it more pro-business. Thank you guys for your time.
Anybody else wishing to share during the public hearing time? Okay, see no one approaching the podium. We'll close this public hearing at 7:13. That'll take us into our action items, the first one being the related action item on that specific use permit. It's item 13, which is consideration of possible action in ordinance number 082125, a request for a specific use permit, S U P, for office use on the south end, 0.26 acres of land described as A0029AR, RV track 132 and known as 207 Chapman Drive, zoned as industrial 1I2 and generally located on the north side of Chapman Drive approximately 525 feet east of the intersection of Chapman Drive and Fifth Street.
One of the things that I didn't mention before that I think is important to this particular use and bringing that the north side of 455 down from industrial to a lower use is that our downtown district now extends all the way to 455. So this will be right across the street from our downtown district.
Do we have anybody from the applicant here that wishes to speak at all?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, I didn't think so, but.
Well, but I still think there's transition time between developing and looking what is proposed and to have a three-year S U P, they're going to have to either re-up it and we can make a decision then. It's a good transition.
Yep. So the little pie shape in front of it?
That wedge.
Yeah. Is that going to be part of it or is that, how do we?
This is kind of the area that they're going to have that's going to be that use. This is the drive area and this will be future parking in that.
He's talking about that little triangle, that's the different little plat lot, that the south part of the area, that's the little triangle.
That is tech stop. That was tech stop taking.
So that's right to the very edge of the house though. It looks like it takes in some of the house.
It is, but they did not take the house.
Okay, so they're going to let them put a driveway there in their eastern?
There's already one that exists there, so they have rights to it.
And what about swinging around to the back for additional parking and all that?
They have, they have like a park area that it says they didn't.
Can you move that back to the settlement?
The settlement. Well, I don't know if it's, oh, sorry guys. I wish I could, I don't know how to make this bigger.
This is just the S U P they're going to come back with their plat and all that?
No, they're not plating at all. This is just a specific use permit for this one use for this one location.
How are we going to control any parking or anything like that?
That'll be done with your C O. When they, when they have the, when they come in to get the C O, they have a user for the offices. The C O will dictate how many parking they have to have and where that parking can be located. The handicap accessibility, it will dictate all of those items.
Okay. That's a good question. Any other questions from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion on item 13.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that I think we approve ordinance number 08-21-25, a request for a specific use permit, S U P, for office use on the south end, 0.26 acres of land described as A is an alpha, 0029AR, RV track 132 and known as 207 Chapman Drive, zoned as industrial 1 and generally located on the north side of Chapman Drive approximately 525 feet east of the intersection of Chapman Drive and Fifth Street.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Bill U, seconded by Councilman Gann, to approve ordinance number 082125 for a request for a specific use permit for office use as described in detail in action 13. Discussion.
Three years are standard?
Three years, I think, is what we would look at for this particular use.
And 180 days, is that standard too? 180 days that it's abandoned and goes back?
Then it would revert that.
Is that our normal standard?
Yeah. Usually it's the, they try to change it all, expect to, yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve ordinance 082125 as presented, indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to agenda 14, which is consideration of possible action on ordinance number 082225, a request for a zoning change from agricultural A to planned development P D for approximately 130.907 acres of land, 60 acres described as A0029AR, RV track 67 and 68 PT and A0029RBV track 66 PT within the city of Singer and generally located on north of FM 455 and east of the Santa Fe Railroad.
Something I will add here is that we did send out 123 public hearing notices for this item and we received one response in favor and one response that was neutral.
Council, we've been introduced to this during work session. We've also got representative from the developer here. You heard some input from the public. Staff has given us a little bit of input with regard to what the developer has come back with based on most of their requests, if not all of their requests. You'd said you kind of heard some of our discussion. Would you like to address any of those questions?
Yes, sir. Once again, for the record, my name is Jerry Silo with JBI Partners. If we had the consent plan, yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Yeah. First off, with regards to the five-foot setback for accessory structures versus 15-foot rear yard setback. What we have run into is it's almost every city in the metroplex and everybody has a little different standard. A lot of people in their backyarders now are having outdoor living areas and some have an arbor that is just the slats with shade, others have a covered roof. And so we are trying to provide the opportunity if the homeowner wants to do one with a covered roof that we have not precluded that from happening. The other issue we have run into all over the place is these outdoor living areas with the kitchen and everything, in many instances, they are under the extension of the roof of the house. So it's the main roof of the house, there's not separation between them. And in many building codes, that outdoor living area, even though it's not walled or anything, that's considered part of the house. And so the larger setback applies. So we're not trying to, for lack of a better term, get away with anything. We're trying to address something that we know is a design function in today's world. If the council feels that we go to what it typically is, we're okay with that and we'll let the homeowners deal with that when they have to. But that is why we're doing it. So with the, as an example, when the roof, with the roof overhang from the house, if I have the roof stopped and I have, just as an example, a one-foot gap and I would have that roof extend again, that roof is not part of the house, but the reality, the practicality is it is. And so we're not trying, like I said, we're not trying to jiggy around anything, we're trying to be upfront about it and every city's different. The council's, it's your discretion, it's your city.
Well, you said something interesting, you said accessory roofing, because that's what we were talking about. If you had a Xito or if you had a fireplace out there, I get it, that's under a different standard and you can do that and you're able to put that away.
Yes, sir.
It's just when it is connected to the main structure and it continues all the way out five foot from the property line, now you're, there are lots of concerns with that, but if it is an accessory, you put a fireplace in your backyard away from the house and you want it covered and get it and that falls under the other standard, the accessory.
And if the council's comfortable with us having that foot separation between the accessory structure and the main roof of the house, that's fine as well.
So are you saying if it's connected that the 15-foot setback would apply?
No, no, it can't, you can, you can, you can tell me that is required. If it's, if it is, if the roof is an extension of the main roof of the house, irrespective of whether the, it's an outdoor living area or anything, your 15-foot setback applies. If there is separation between the roof is roofs, your 5-foot setback applies. Or whatever the council wants.
The house that paid day rate?
The current degree is that whether it's attached or not, the cost of setback applies.
Ryan, what is, what is the required setback between the principal and accessory?
We don't have one, as long as it's not attached.
And so you're thinking over that, the other conversation had to do with when the initial park was developed. And what we have asked will be, once again, from a practical perspective, if the developer is required to have the park in place when the first house is under construction, the developer has contracts with home builders to build the houses. If they run into problems with supplies or workload or something else from the guys that are building the park, that has the potential to put them in default with the builders to lose those contracts. So what we had offered up was that we will, construction of the park will start, excuse me, yes, prior, construction of the park will start with everything else and it finishes whenever it times out and finishes.
Well, that's, we have no control whether it finishes. So I have no idea how you're going to do this development, if it's going to be phased.
Yes, sir.
A lot of times if it is phased, then it starts in phase one, but it must be completed before you start phase two. That's typical.
And we're, and we're happy to add that stipulation.
Okay, but if you see any phasing, and so if we're going to do something here, we can put a percentage of houses that are, that are built. I mean, you can start it when the first house is built, but finishing, this is our only time to put, because we've had, we've had parks that still aren't built because if we're going to start them, when they started development, they did, but they never finished.
Correct. Yeah, and we have no problem adding that stipulation that we can't get any type of permit for construction of phase two until the park is built and accepted by the city.
Okay, but once, once again, that could, okay, starting phase two, is that what I'm, that's what I'm.
And did we, I mean, when that, I mean, this is what we're proving, it doesn't show phases, so should we just say body, 35th house being built, which is virtually 10% or whatever? I mean, I mean, unless, because we don't see phases, but at least it would be a definitive. You know, what, what would you prefer us try to modify this act?
I would probably recommend something to that effect simply because what if phase one develops that phase two doesn't? Or the housing market crash was in phase two never develops, then you have phase one with no on that case.
What I would suggest to get a solid phase with, home builder's going to want, in any phase, most home builders have to have at least a minimum of 35 lots. This is going to be a couple of different home builders because there's different lot sizes, different product type. So if I could, if we're going to put a cap on it or before the next, 100 homes gives everybody the flexibility to get something moving, get some momentum going.
That's just under 25%.
Yes, sir.
As long as we have a, I'm indifferent, as long as we have a measurement point.
Right.
I think that's what council's looking for, it's just a measurement point.
And like I said, we're trying to get, we try to get momentum going in the neighborhood.
How many phases do you see this project?
Probably three.
Three?
Just for ballpark.
So that's probably talking. So really?
If you want phase two, that's that's it.
Okay, so essentially it's completing phase one and starting phase two. If we need to do a number, we can just call it 100 on us.
That'll work. However, the council, however the council prefers.
Oh, yeah, we have to tell you, right?
All right. Does half have, does half have strong feelings about the detached, not detached, the setback? Y'all were asking for what setback on?
We were saying that if that roof is attached to the house, it is considered part of the house and you call the house.
And we're fine with that.
And is staff comfortable with any kind of separation and then calling it accessory?
Yeah, then if we call it accessory structure?
It meets whatever accessory structure.
If you don't, if you don't have a required setback between principal and the other that could leave the mansion there and revisit it, your other option would be if it, you know, would be to add, the council's concern, if I heard, was the possibility of adding a clothes at some point as well? You could, you could, you could go to the other route and allow it as attached or you could actually do that provision not to, not to allow any clothes on that, that's harder to implement.
Just to recover, the panios can still go to the five foot. It's just when there's a roof and all.
Yes, sir, that's what the question is.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And just so the council's aware of this and I know the city manager is, this issue will not be an issue between the city and home builder. It'll be an issue between the city and the home buyer somewhere down the road when they want to improve their backyard. So it's, I've just run into this where the home buyer comes chomping at the building inspection department and of course then they go to the council. And whatever the council wants to have, we're fine with it.
Does the city have a mandatory HOA?
The HOA will maintain all the common areas, which are the green spaces, the open spaces that meet the park requirements, all that. Everything that's green on that drawing will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association.
That's where it's positioned to go if you had anything that if you had, that they actually go ahead of us and they're sure to have it.
Remy, if they met this setback, would it still be a variance to our new ordinances?
Not, no, because this is in itself, it's unordnance. So this becomes the ordinance.
But it's what he's asking, is it different than what we're asking the generic person to do in our ordinance?
Yes, it is. It is. Yeah, most of our council at 20 is going to have other areas.
With the 78, 60-foot lots, how'd you come up with 78 of them? Is it just the way it fit or is there a ratio?
It's, it's the, it's a ratio from our clients talking with the building community and what they feel is a marketable neighborhood in terms of providing enough larger homes, enough larger lots rather, excuse me, to provide variety in the neighborhood. enough larger lots, rather, excuse me, to provide variety in the neighborhood. Nobody wants, for lack, nobody wants a monoculture neighborhood.
Right.
So we're, and just because we are saying that there's going to be that number of 70s, and that number of 50s, or 60s and 50s, does not mean when we come in the plat, and they have a builder locked up at that point, that those numbers, the number of 60s doesn't go up. That's just going to be the minimum that has to be in the neighborhood.
On the railroad, I'm sure there's a standard on setback from the railroad tracks and.
There are, there are. They can't be in the railroad property, and the same thing applies with the two neighborhoods to the north of that, they'll, they'll have the same weight line limits to the railroad.
And we have proposed, it's a little hard to see on this, but we have proposed a 20-foot landscape off between the rear or west property line, and the west property line also adjacent to it.
And that's probably the best, of course, you can have.
And with regards to Commissioner Wood's comments about connectivity to the commercial, we believe we're addressing that for a couple of reasons. First off, please remember, every street has a sidewalk on both sides, which is pedestrian-friendly. Secondly, with what we are proposing with the residential next to the commercial, it's a balance between having access in areas that are not the back end of a shopping center. You know, where all the Trump crash dumpsters and the trucks are. So what we have proposed, if I may go back to.
Yeah, absolutely.
What we have proposed is from the park area, is that a big part of our solid, along our green, which is about 18 acres of neighborhood. This is basically our main block, coming through. Provide opportunity, this is adjacent there, that we can get several sort of trucks, and a lot of vehicles. And on these side, we have two bunches connecting the retail and the residential. So if you do want a lawn, or a, or whatever, kind of from the shopping center, versus we can also open that in.
I mean, the plan is on condition to do this.
They did, and they already did.
Based on, based on, with those double chances, will they own the side of that?
Yes, well, the comments that I gave, and they want to set aside, sorry, to the council.
Well, even, even though it didn't show exactly how you're going to access the commercial, it, it does make sense, if you're going to have a commercial facility there, you want people to come, and you want people in there. You're going to provide access to this. You would not make them go all the way out to 455, and then have to turn back in somewhere.
Because Bell's will have sidewalk on both sides as well.
Right. So it makes sense that you want it accessible to all those patrons, right there in your backyard.
And as I said, it's that balance.
Yeah.
You know?
To the trail point, I mean, I don't, that, I'm presuming that's a sidewalk trail of some measurement, or is it, or is it grant, crush granite?
I think it's got to be all the granite.
Crush granite? What's the trail?
It's concrete.
Yeah, it's a six-foot concrete trail.
Concrete.
Yes.
I mean, the connectivity of the trail, to me, does make a little bit of sense, depending on whether you want people walking the sidewalk up to the next big green patch.
So the reason, the reason why we sound here is because we don't know what the neighbors are supposed to be. So since we have one of our park areas immediately adjacent, we're going with the connection that's there, and that's due to our park area, versus on the other side. On the other side, we have, we have two here, there's just a small side of the patch, up to there, we're going with the connection that's always a good idea.
We need to know about those kind of issues as well, so we want the neighbors to connect cohesively as well.
My point was, and I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying, but if you're not going to, if you're not going to do everything past that, until you figure out what the other one's doing, you could be built out before that develops. Who's going to come back and connect that? Is that going to be something that you would be committed to? I know that's a what-if, but this is our only time to discuss what if.
They're kind of connecting the road or the green space?
The green space, it's my understanding, you're not going to do that little batch of, of green space going to no man's land, correct?
No, no, it's going to be, it's, the green space is going to be developed as an HOA lot. We are not, we're not proposing a specific six-foot wide trail. As, as I mentioned, since part of that, since part of area A is adjacent to Bell's Road, there will be a city sidewalk all along Bell's Road that connects up into there, for lack of a trail, in the creek. So even if we're in and out, there's still pedestrian ability to get to.
Theoretically, what you're envisioning, if you could project it, you'd come up the trail to Bell's, you would take the sidewalk up to A, and use a crosswalk and get to A.
Yes, sir.
And then, because that's A going up into A, you know, theoretically, there's a trail or some kind of development of Park A.
This guy goes as smart as people.
Yeah.
This is, this is, you need anything else?
Yeah, just, if we, if Park A had the trail connect, I guess, I guess it's connecting along Bell's, so it doesn't really matter too much.
Well, you would, theoretically, you would reduce some of the flexibility of designs in the north.
A, right.
No, all I'm saying is, that little chunk could be, if nothing happens, nothing, it does not develop to the north, and you finish your entire project, and you still have that one little rematch that's not done, and the developer to the north is probably not going to want to come down and finish it out. And when I say finish it out, do the six-foot path, because, once again, I thought I heard it, then I said, no, and now I'm here to begin. From Bell's north, you're not going to put the six-foot path in yet, right?
I, I think one thing we can propose, because I, I understand your concern, and it's a very valid concern, I think one, one thing we could propose is, while we lock the, the construction of the park to be finished by after the first 100 lots, that whether it's a lot count, or whether it's a phase, that, that, that link in, in area A of a six-foot trail is either built, or the money is escrowed.
Perfect. Before your development is done, and it's built out.
Yeah.
Because there's too many developments that.
Yes, yeah.
One of these things aren't finished, and they come here, wanting the city to finish that out and connect it.
Yeah.
Just, we can capture that, and I like what you said, but I'm not, I get it, you don't need to do it now, but before that development, the time development is completed, it's either constructed or money escrowed.
That the city could build it if they had to.
And is that, some staff can, or do we need to do that?
You're moving into development according to that area.
Well, that's, okay, so I'm ahead of, I'm out in front of my skis a little bit, y'all will take care of that, but that is a concern.
Well, you, you're dealing with a zoning right now.
Right.
And an escrow is moving this to a big time.
But the development agreement will come back to us.
There is no development.
Because it's not a.
That's what I mean, you're moving into an area where we would consider the development agreement, which is the topic.
Yeah, I got you.
Could we just say, I mean, we could say that Park A shall have a trail extended to the north, in alignment with all the other, in similar fashion as the other trail, and that wouldn't be, I mean, that would be part of the design criteria, right?
And then, and then that would be our burden to do.
Yeah, without escrow or anything, just do it.
Yes.
Right? Then we're not.
Or you might consider, I mean, the, again, we don't know what the road looks like. You know, you could ask them to recycle that path, that owes to just to extend a travel nowhere.
Single one.
So, you know, I mean, the.
That would be perfect. I'm sorry? That would be perfect, if you circulate it, and just make a looper there, all the way to the edge, and if somebody else wants to tie in on a later date, they can.
Just, yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
Okay. Does council have any cohesive suggestion on that setback deal, or does anybody feel strongly about that? I think what I'm hearing is, we generally would probably approve this contingent on parks being done, as, as presented, with the addition of parks being completed, and by at least 100 homes being done, and the building of a recirculating trail in Park Area A, within that same timeframe.
Oh, what, my understanding was Trail A was prior to the neighborhood being built out.
Ah, to the full neighborhood being built out?
Yes, because, because that may not be in that phase. And, and if I may, if the council's comfortable with, if the roof is part of the main house, then you have to have the 15-foot rear setback, and if it's an accessory roof, you can have the five-foot rear setback, we are fine with that.
Well, I'm leaning towards the accessory, then you could have it wherever you want, but, that's, that's for council as a whole to decide.
I think you're allowing for both, basically. You're saying, if somebody wanted to be part of the house, so they walk right out in the shade, and have their deal, we would have a bigger setback. If somebody wanted green space between their house and their pergola, or their other roof structure, they could do the five foot.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I hear 100 homes to finish the parks, a recirculating trail in Park A, prior to the neighborhood build out, and 15-foot setback if it's part of the house, with a five-foot setback allowed if it's an accessory. And that may not be what council wants to do, but that's what I'm hearing.
That, that would be the motion I would make. When you're ready for it.
Any other comments from council about the roof? I'm, I'm ready.
Yes, so moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so I've got a motion by Councilman Bill U., seconded by Councilwoman Barrett, to approve ordinance number OA 2225, a request for zoning change from agricultural age to planned development PD, as described in detail in item 14, and the related, in the related additional development stand, Exhibit A development standards, as presented to council tonight, and with the following changes, which would include that the parks must be completed after 100 homes, that the recirculating trail in Park Area A be completed prior to the neighborhood build out, and that there be a 15-foot setback if an outdoor area is attached to the house, and a five-foot setback allowed if it's an accessory structure. I get that clear enough, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion indicated by raising your hand? Two, all opposed? Two? So I get to vote, huh? I'll vote for it, so it passes three to two, with the mayor voting to break the tie.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right. All right, um, that'll bring its time to 15, considering possible action on change order number four, in the amount of 11,406, with Anna Site Construction LLC, for the additional work on water and sewer lines, and also the city manager to execute said change order number four.
Senator Mayor, council. This is a final item to the I-35 Water and Sewer Relocation.
Final item?
Final item.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, we're, when this, this final change order is done, we are complete out there with all the relocations, everything's done. It's a small change order, and it's just to reconcile the quantities for the CSJ's 80, uh, 081 and 074, and just a few small things. These final quantities have already been reflected in executed supplemental agreement of tech stop, but it's just for some drought, and things like that. We had additional eight-inch line that had to be droughted, 703 feet, and then there's some credit for some seeding that we didn't need, about a little over 1,000 square yards of grass seeding that wasn't needed, and then there's also additional 70 feet of C-900 water line, eight-inch water line that was put in, and then one extra credit for a water meter that wasn't needed, and then the trench protection for that water line installation. So total of $11,406, and that will pretty well finalize that project.
It is reimbursable? It's all already calculated in the reimbursement?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I've had conversations with those guys, as last week, we should start seeing our, some of our money coming back towards the first part of October, in September, first part of October, on that project.
I'm going to put that on my calendar.
Okay. Any other questions, council? What's your pleasure on item 15?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve change order number four, in the amount of $11,406, with Anna Site Construction LLC, for the additional work on water and sewer lines, and the city manager to execute said change order number four.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Bill U., seconded by Councilman Gann, to approve change order number four, in the amount of $11,406, with Anna Site Construction, as detailed in item 15. Any other discussion? All in favor indicated by raising your hand? Passes your hand, I'll say.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 16, consideration of possible action on resolution number 2025-10, accepting the proposed property tax rate, establishing dates for public hearings on the proposed property tax rate, and fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, providing for the dates for the city council to approve the property tax rate, and fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, and providing for publication of a public hearing notices as provided by the Texas law. This will require a record vote. Uh, State Secretary will do that, but before we take that, is there any discussion council would like to, like to have?
Yes, one more minute. All right, so, go ahead. The page is, uh, 0.689747. So, remind me, the de minimis is essentially 70 cents. We're, we're under that, but we're, that would be the maximum under the de minimis rate, is that correct? Is that what the 70s?
The maximum without a vote, right?
Correct, correct.
I mean, to still be within the de minimis.
The no new revenue rate.
Okay.
Is the rate that gives 3.5% increase in revenues over the prior year. And remember, that's only for properties that are on both tax rolls, is how they, is how they determine that. And de minimis rate is the rate that goes above that, that allows an additional $500,000 in revenue for cities that are under a 30,000 population. This proposed rate, which is the same as the rate for the last two years, is below both the no new revenue rate, and below the de minimis rate.
It's not below the. It's below the de minimis, but not below the no new.
It's below the voter approval.
Voter approval.
Yeah.
It's below voter approval.
Well, I'm going off into my pocket, and if it's a typo, then.
It's, you're, it's below the voter approved rate, and below the de minimis rate, but not below the no new revenue rate.
Yes, I, my apologies, I must, I must, I must have spoke there, yes, below the voter approval rate. It is above the no new revenue rate.
So my, my real question is this, the, the, the proposed tax rate that we have right here, that falls within the de minimis, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting, because it didn't line up with any of those. And I was just trying to figure out why, how I didn't do the, I forgot about the no new revenue plus whatever percentage it was, so I would have done the calculation.
So what were the considerations in coming up with this rate?
Um, John, do you want to take that one?
Um, as we, as we have issued, issued debt, and paid debt, we have tried to stabilize that rate, that's a discussion that we've had for several years with the council. We looked at the current options, current budget demands we had, keeping in mind that there was a lot still, because it was uncertain with funding through, and we felt that it was conservative to keep our rate the same, and also. it was conservative to keep our rate the same and also safe, uh, in case there were changes in funding some of the services that we provide. You know, ideally, uh, in an ideal world, we would be able to drop that rate, uh, but not knowing how funding is, where we chose to recommend that we just all stay, uh, there was never any consideration, uh, CFO's officer mind raising that rate, and the intent has been how flat can we keep this rate?
With the, with the way legislation is and not really sure on the direction they're gonna go, the opportunities that we have being under 30,000, and with the anticipated rapid expansion of the city and its services, do we lose any opportunity to, um, be able to raise the rate, to get some of the services that we will be needing in the very near future, that we're not gonna be able to do if we don't take advantage of that at this point? Does that make sense?
In, in a nutshell, yes. Um, when, so.
Or is there?
Part of the, part, part of the rate calculation is always that comparison with the prior year rate. So, at, at the point that council decides that they want to lower the tax rate, that will affect the calculation for future years, which, that happened quite a few years ago, and as, as that happens, um, it's a little more difficult to raise the rate if, if needed for future development.
Right, and I, I guess that's my point, is that, you know, if we don't try to anticipate what the future is definitely coming at us, and the potential for, you know, extend, expanded services, and being able to fund those, or on the other capacities bonding, which, um, I don't know if the tax rate has a, has a play in our bonding, and how much that's gonna cost us versus being able to generate that income this way and maybe not have to bond out so much, or if we are able to do that. So, are we losing some opportunity not taking it up to where we can max it out at that 70 cent rate? And, uh, are we, are we, are we leveraging any of the future by not doing that now?
Councilman, relative to the tax rate versus your needs, you're gonna have to bond at some point.
Right, right.
And so the challenge is, if, if you raise taxes and put the tax rate tomorrow, if you raise that tax rate now and you maximize that tax rate, which you could, and it will bring you money, and you have to go bond later, and the legislation changes where you have to bond for a need, but people feel that they are overtaxed, you have that challenge of being able to pass that bond, and if they can't change the legislation to a supermajority or anything like that, um, or they change the, uh, what you can issue against, you know, I mean, you should be fortunate that your water and sewer would be included, public safety facilities, but, you know, other items like your other administrative facilities or, or, uh, uh, your, um, your things that are not, your electric, which is enterprise, but not included, included the same way, or wastewater, um, if we know we have to bond, we're trying to leverage that knowledge in this as well, because the bonding is actually a higher capacity of ocean we need as opposed to your de minimis rate, just in our opinion. I mean, like, conservatives get on that as well.
The voter approved tax rate, too, would subject, does that call for, refresh me on this, does that call for a petition to voter approve, or is that automatic requires a vote?
It's a rate, it's not.
I, I don't know, because there's not much difference, there's a little bit of wiggle between our proposed stable no raising of the tax rate.
Yes.
And the voter approved rate, there's a little bit, but not a lot there.
In that petition threshold, if they do that petition, that's on the agenda as well, they could lower that threshold for what a petition's.
And the, the way, the way that, what, the way that it happens, the way that it reads for, especially for those with the de minimis rate, um, if you go above than the voter approval rate.
Right.
As long as you're at or below the de minimis rate, there's another step in there that says calculation that allows residents to petition.
Right.
Um, recalculates the rate, not at a 3.5% increase, but at an 8% increase. So, you're kind of looking at it this way, that here, here's our proposed rate here, voter approval rate is here, and then de minimis rate is here. If you were to adopt the de minimis rate or lower that was up there, the rate would have to be above this, it would have to be at an 8% increase up here before there could be a petition for an election.
I think philosophically where we've stood toward the comment earlier during public hearing, or the comment time, the challenge is kind of what Alan has expressed, is that we're growing fast enough, um, that, I mean, and we're taking care of older infrastructure. We've been around since 1800s, and some of it seems like it's, it's not, but feels like it's some type of work. To the extent that we had all the potholes in Sanger, Texas handled, um, we would definitely begin lowering the rate. Anything that we can generate from growth that we can put back into some of the core things that we're trying to constantly maintain and keep up, um, that growth does, that incremental growth and absolute increase in real dollars lets us catch up on some things that we're always playing catch-up on. So, the new development comes in, we have some impact fees on them to try to handle the infrastructure. One, they build most of their infrastructure, and we have some impact fees that affect their paying their way, um, at least partially, and then, to the extent that the property tax can naturally grow with the growth we experience, then we can take that incremental extra dollars and try to speed up. You know, we've had a, Jim can say, we've had a five, seven-year road building project, and when we have a little extra, we accelerate. One, one of those projects up, we pull it forward. So, to the extent that we end up with some of those excesses, it just means we can improve some areas a little faster usually than we would otherwise be able to. That's my personal take on it, and while we, while we're not going up in rate, we know the absolute dollars are going up a little bit, but if we were not always playing catch-up, it would be, you know, it would be an easier decision, but because we're always trying to keep up everything, I think it, I think it's, it's a good balance between not taking the rate up, but taking the extra dollars and putting them in our core services, whether that's police, fire, roads, uh, any of that.
And I do, I do always like to point out, just, I know everyone understands, but just, just to be completely clear, this resolution sets a proposed tax rate?
Yeah.
This does not set the tax rate. Once this resolution is set, if you set your tax rate here, after this date, if council so decides, you can s- set an actual tax rate lower.
But you can't.
Than this, than this rate.
Right.
But you cannot set a tax rate that is higher than, than the proposed rate.
Good reminder.
I think you said this in, in all of that, too. This proposed rate, you took into consideration some of the legisla- legislation that may not go our direction, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard.
Thank you, Clayton.
I have a popular opinion, but I understand the state's intention was trying to make this easier for people to digest and understand, because my personal opinion, they made it way more complicated than, and it's very complicated. So, my, my bid, soapbox speech is gonna be on the regular day, and how it is taking into consideration properties that are the same for both years. So we know that our ones have been built, we know that large acreages have been turned into smaller subdivisions, we know that there's a empty field that's gonna have a beautiful grocery store shortly, right? These calculations and the numbers shared for the noted revenue rate are not allowed to factor in those components, right? So the noted revenue rate being hit, general fund brought in a certain amount of dollars based on property taxes, if you wanted to do that again, this is what that rate would be, right?
Yes, as, 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 as it states, no new revenue, which gives.
Right.
Exactly the same dollar amount of revenue this year, this year as last year.
What the state was trying to do was saying, hey, those same properties don't have the same evaluation, right, from the county, so they're saying this is the numbers scheme on that evaluation process. But the big piece they're leaving out is if you had 500 homes this year and 750 homes the next year, that noted revenue rate would actually be very different. That's, that's my speech, that's my old grumpy monkey moment on why that's more complicated than the duty.
And the present rate we've got now makes up our budget, 80% of our budget, the, the property tax that this generates makes up how much percentage of our?
Um, approximately 50%.
50%.
Yeah, it was in there somewhere.
And going into the next year, we're anticipating higher sales tax, so that should actually reduce a little bit because of an increase in sales tax, so we're, we're not so dependent on.
Yes, it, it should, in, in, in coming years, you know, when, when 455 is completed, when 35 is completed especially, as new businesses come in here that we've been waiting on for five years now to happen, as those come in and our tax base, our sales tax base grows, and, and sales tax revenues increase, it makes us less dependent on property taxes at that point.
Any other thoughts or discussions from council? I entertain a motion, how the council would like to proceed.
So, do, do we actually need to say that number in here, or just say the proposed tax rate?
I think we adopt resolution. And it's included, you're adopting the full resolution, which includes, if you're, if you're for the stated, as it's stated in the resolution, I think you can make the motion to approve the resolution. Once I have a motion and a second, we'll ask the city secretary to do a record vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution, uh, number 2025-10, accepting the proposed property tax rate, establishing dates for public hearings on the proposed property tax rate in fiscal year 2025 and 2026 budget, providing for the dates for the city council to approve the property tax rate in fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, and providing publication of public hearing notices as provided by the Texas State Law.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion by Councilman Bill U., seconded by Councilman Gann, approving resolution 2025-10, accepting the proposed property tax rate, establishing dates for public hearings on the proposed property tax rate and fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, providing for the dates for the city council to approve the property tax rate and fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, and providing for publication of public hearing notices as provided by Texas State Law. Kelly, if you'll poll the council.
Councilmember Garrett, how do you go? Yes. Councilmember Gann?
Yes.
Councilmember Bill U?
That's important.
Councilmember Shipp?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, given the record vote, the, uh, resolution, to approve resolution 2025-10 related to the property tax and the details therein, is approved, uh, four to zero, noting that Councilman Burris is, is not, um, will be noted as, as absent on the, on the record vote. Okay, that brings us to item 17, which is consideration possible action on resolution 2025-11, appointing and reappointing members of 4A Industrial Development Corporation, 4B Development Corporation, Parks and Recreation slash Keep Sanger Beautiful Board, Board of Adjustments, Library Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Capital Improvements, and Sanger Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation. The council has the names there in your packet along with applications. Um, I, as I mentioned in work session, I worked with staff and the directors, and the director spent time interviewing, meaning the applications, getting to fill for them, and in spaces where we didn't have applicants, um, I twisted some arms and we got some folks to apply. So, any questions or thoughts council would like to share on those? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve action item number 17 as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Gann?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Gann, seconded by Councilman Bill U., approving resolution 2025-11, appointing and reappointing our various boards, commissions, and corporations as presented in action item 17. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Passage to Anna Site, thank you. Council, is there any future agenda items you'd like to mention for staff's consideration?
Mayor, I have a couple others.
Okay.
Um, so the general public is aware, you did call for a public hearing on August 18th for the tax rate, that would be at 7:00 p.m., uh, per the, uh, resolution, September 2nd, you will be seeing 30% plans on the Marion Road project.
Wow.
And that would be a 6:00 p.m. workshop item. And just a reminder, this is not our agenda, there is the open hearing by CQ, the manager, that is Thursday 14th, at 7:00 p.m.
At the Civic Center.
3:21, Mr. Robert. Thank you.
We had something on the 11th, council.
11th, council.
That's right.
I know you just said it did Community Center, right?
Civic Center.
Okay.
Corner Bell and McKinney.
Right.
Anything else under that future agenda? Okay, council, you also have information items for the public waste services, Metropolitan Transportation Plan notice there, and that, the synergy, uh, rate, rate information. Any comments or questions of council that you have on those items? Okay, hearing none, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:00 or 9:00.